Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15.
If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning for lack of a quorum today.
Good morning, everybody. And once again, welcome to City Hall. It is now 10:15. The Council meets at 10 o'clock or soon thereafter as we have a quorum. There are five members present. Thank you to Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Han, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Zine. We need 10 members for a quorum. Mr. Burnson, Ms. Galanter, Mr. Holden, Ms. Miskowski, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and Mr. Weiss. It is now 10:15. If we don't have a quorum in the next five or 10 minutes, we will consider adjourning
items six, 16, 27, and 31, and then we will go into the special meeting agenda, take that item along with the regular agenda closed session items. You got it, Madam Clerk?
Item number six, Mr. President, that one was called special and on the desk.
Okay, item six is now before us, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, Council President, council members, this is a case in which we find that we have a project that is applying for extra antennas on a commercial building, and you have a decision made by the hearing examiner, and I'd ask him to step up to give us his point of view, and... Well, we're going to continue with this matter today, and we can move forward. So I'm going to continue, our proceedings today, I understand, I can ask for a continuance, but we're going to move on.
Yes, sir. My name is Albert Landini, I'm the zoning administrator of record on this. In this particular case, because it was a specific plan exemption, I occupied the role of hearing examiner, making an advisory report to the South Valley Area Planning Commission, who was the original first finder of fact on this. In my recommendation to the South Valley Area Planning Commission, I recommended that the case be approved. I had conducted a public hearing on this matter, and I had extensive testimony from residential neighbors, who were largely associated with a nearby elementary school, although the elementary school is on the fringe of the notification area, regarding health issues from radiation on these antenna. I informed those persons in the audience that the Federal Telecommunications Act, I believe it's of 1996, precludes local jurisdictions, when they are licensed, when the facilities are being licensed by the Federal Communications Commission, from considering health impacts. Essentially, what we do, that is, the city of Los Angeles, in looking at these kinds of installations, is look to the aesthetics of them, and any disruptive considerations that might be resulting from noise, or frequency of maintenance. In this case, the plans were reviewed, and the antennas were found to be relatively innocuous, in that they were going to be facade-mounted on the building, at a height near the top of the building that was already existing. There would be no substantial mass or architectural distortion of the building as currently existing, resulting from the approval of these antenna. Further, there was consideration of the equipment cabinets being placed on the roof of the subject building, and the community had some concern about noise emanating from the cooling fans associated with this equipment. The zoning administrator addressed these in his recommendations by requiring that the antennas, that the equipment cabinets be reduced in size and lowered below the parapet of the building, so that they would be out of the line of sight with relatively nearby apartment buildings. Subsequent to that, the case went to the Area Planning Commission, they considered all of this material, and they made a determination to, in effect, deny the request as made by the applicant, and their primary thrust of their denial was that the applicant had not proved to their satisfaction that there was a substantial need for these antennas to be located at this particular place. That case then moved forward, and the applicant appealed that determination to the city council, where it went to the Plum Committee. The Plum Committee then conducted its own public hearing on this matter, hearing from, again, the same people from the Carpenter Avenue School, and looking at the applicant's plans. At this point in time, the Plum Committee considered the applicant's suggestion for further hiding these antenna, and blending them into the architectural facade of the building, by putting on false panels on the front of their antenna, so that they would be of a same size and shape as all the other antenna there, so that it would blend in with that building. The Plum Committee was a two-person committee at that meeting, and they essentially had a split vote, and came forward to your body here today with no recommendation on that matter. I stand ready to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. I have more questions for the city attorney. Question I have is, would this city be subject to a lawsuit if the appeal filed by Sprint PCS were denied based on health reasons?
I think Jerry Burge from the city attorney's office has been handling this matter, she's at the center desk.
Jerry Burge, city attorney's office. As the zoning administrator stated, the city is preempted from regulating based on health. So if indeed a court were to find that the city had denied this on a health basis, that it would be likely that a steady court would find that. The question would be whether or not the findings, though, are supported by substantial evidence, and whether they are based on health reasons or not.
Has the city been sued on some of the cases, and if so, what were their outcomes?
The city, to my knowledge, has been sued on cases involving wireless telecommunications facilities, but not related to the health issue. They have been based simply on findings, and we have prevailed, and not prevailed, depending on the strength of the findings.
So it's really a 50-50 situation?
Yeah, that would be my assessment.
Okay. I think, council members, I'm having this outlog, sharing this information, so that we can look at the issues, what they are, and so that we can make a decision based on the facts, and based on the experience that we have had as a city in dealing with these issues. Thank you.
Mr. Bernson?
Yes, members of the council, this is a case of clearly what the city has advocated, and that is to have joint site usage, so that we don't have multiple sites all over the place with antennas in order to accommodate cell phones. The visual impact actually will be improved by this project, because of the parapet that's going to be built around it. The main thrust of opposition, even though we did not allow them to state it, because the fact that we're precluded from considering anything that is governed by the FAA, was the nearness of the school with a potential health risk, which the federal government has determined does not exist. There's simply no reason to deny this particular case, and to deny it, I also believe, in this jeopardy of viability on being sued. Regardless of that, this is a case that advocates exactly what we have advocated, is to consolidate the sites, to make them as visually pleasant as possible, in many cases, they have trees, which we have made to look like palm trees, and things of that nature. In this particular case, it's a building which is over the size of buildings in the area, but it is, was there prior to the plan, which limited the height of buildings in the area, that already has several antennas, which are almost visually not visible on the site. So there's really no reason to deny this, and I think that we should move forward and approve it today. Is there somebody here from Sprint, did you request a continuance? Is there a representative of Sprint here today? Did you request a continuance? Yes or no, we'll do.
Yes, we did.
You did, and for what reason, may I ask?
Sprint representatives planned to be here today, but their flight was canceled this morning from the Bay Area.
And if we were to move forward and approve this today, you think they'd be upset?
No, sir.
I see, okay. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to move that we move forward with this today, I think we need to approve this, I think, I think if we deny this appeal, then basically we have to deny every site that was applied for in the city, because this falls within the realm of exactly what we're trying to accomplish. So I would urge, I would move that we approve the, we approve the appeal with the additional conditions which were recommended by the zoning administrator at our planning committee
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really do appreciate what my colleague, Mr. Bernson, has said, and what the chair of the committee, Mr. Reyes, has said, and I know, I know how carefully they've considered this matter, and I know that they're here today presenting arguments in good faith, and they have strong, valid points that they raise, but the community here is in sort of a funny position, because the community is within council district two, adjacent to my district, and they're represented by this chair right here for now, and that's unfortunate. And I know there was a public hearing previously at the Plum Committee, but I would move to reopen the public hearing at this time, and I hope my colleagues would support me in that, because we have representatives from the community, including from the Carpenter Avenue School, which is a wonderful school in Studio City, that is supported by so many people in that community, I mean, it really is a model of what you're looking at, Ms. Han, in your, in your committee, I mean, really getting parents and merchants of the local community to support their school, vice principals here, I think it's real... Thank you, Ms. Han, I appreciate that. They have important concerns, and as I understand their concerns, they're not, they're not health-related concerns, they're valid concerns that I think we ought to listen to and give serious consideration to. So that's my motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weiss. Motion to reopen the public hearing, colleagues, we do have four cards, they're in item six, let's open the roll on reopening the public hearing, close the roll, tally the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, so the public hearing is reopened, Mr. Weiss, if you want to specify an amount of time.
Well, I assume that we have a representative from the other side here, Mr. Bernson, despite the fact that some people missed their plane, if we could hold the public hearing to 10 or 15 minutes, no more?
Well, we have, how about this, we have four cards littered up until now, I'd ask that each of the speakers limit their comments to two minutes or less. Please let us know if you had an opportunity to provide public comment at the committee level, as you begin your comments. Council calls forward, first Heidi Brahms, to be followed by David Burke.
Your prerogative, but any vote be up here. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. This struggle has been ongoing for us for more than eight months, at every stage, from the height hearing to the Area Planning Commission, to Plum, we've shown up, prepared, and unified in our opposition to this installation. What gets under Sprint's skin is that we're doing the very thing they don't want us to do, the thing we are asked in city charters and election speeches from our politicians, trumpeting neighborhood empowerment. We are organizing, we are educating ourselves on the issues, and we're actually arguing the merits of this case. Sprint only wants you to look at what Pac Bell did, and they mesh their appeal in the telecom act to try and scare people from actually looking at this application. What the APC recognized was that we presented real, tangible, and logical reasons why the application should be denied. They heard us and made their decision accordingly. So briefly, here are the reasons why the APC decision should be upheld. At the heart of this is the Ventura-Kuwanga specific plan. Now, the plan is in place to maintain a carefully balanced mix of land uses. This area is owned for limited, not full, commercial use. The restricted zoning is designed to protect this balance of land uses. An exception to the specific plan should be granted only if it remedies some dire need of the community in which the exception is being requested. Sprint failed to show, from the ZA on up, the need for these antennas. Why should we exacerbate the non-conformity of this building that abuts a residential neighborhood by turning it into an expandable telecommunications facility if we don't have to? Isn't that what specific plans are designed to protect? Now, regarding need, at the public hearing, for the height exception, Sprint told the zoning administrator that they needed this site to fill a gap in their coverage.
I'd ask you to conclude, please.
I'm sorry?
I'd ask you to conclude.
Sure. They never provided Administrator Landini with data to support that claim. They gave the community the equivalent of the dog ate my homework. At the APC hearing, knowing the full weight of opposition in the community, they told the commission and those present that they left those figures at the office. All of their data that they've compiled since was taken after the APC hearing, and only confirms what we already know, that the blocked and dropped call rates in that range are 2% to 3%. That means they get 97% to 98% of their calls through and completed. Those are the kind of numbers that cellphone companies look for. They are not entitled to achieve a competitive advantage, nor are they mandated by the FCC to create a seamless network. Those are the commercial interests of the company. It is not a city planner's job to monitor the market share of the various telecom companies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We need to have you conclude, as Brahms is next, and as additional speakers come up, I'd ask that you please repeat previous arguments.
Good morning, council president and council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name's Heidi Brahms, and I'm a resident for 11 years as an employee at Carpenter, and a resident in the area for 35 years. The school is one of the anchors of the neighborhood, the school is what keeps the neighborhood a strong neighborhood. The parents are neighborhood parents, they are not students from other areas, and the business supports our school, and our school supports many of those local businesses, many of our student families own those businesses. I've never seen a community in all those areas united on such a front at our school ever before. A cellphone tower would erode the character of our neighborhood. The price was made to value, the real estate agents have testified during the APC hearing that, and that ultimately, the quality of the school will decline, and our schools are part of our city, and Carpenter is one of those stars. As a teacher and an assistant principal at the school, I spend many hours teaching our students about the power of the democracy that we are all so proud of, and the importance that every citizen has a right in voting and electing their representatives, and determining the future of their community, and we are trying to do that. Sadly, this lesson isn't as strong as we had hoped it would be. Sprint has manipulated the process to go against the unanimous wishes of our community. Throughout the process, we've made requests to meet with them, which have not followed through on their part. Some evidence was not presented to us in a timely fashion, and blatant advantage, we feel, has been taken, that our neighborhood representation is not in place at this time. You have a chance to show our whole city, young and old, and our students are aware of why we are here today, as are the parents, that when a community behaves respectfully, responsibly, and as we're all taught to in school, to act appropriately within our system, and that the merits of this case, as detailed in the recommendations of the local governors like the APC and the council in the Wax, ultimately does matter and does make a difference for our future.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next speakers are Gregory Sanders, to be followed by Don Morey.
I follow them, so I just need to talk to the person who's on the side.
Mr. Holden?
How much time are we going to give?
We're giving them two minutes each.
And for how many people you have?
Four, these are the last two cards.
Council President Padilla, members of the city council, one housekeeping chore. First of all, my name is Gregory W. Sanders, I'm an attorney representing PCS. I have a letter and some documents that have been provided to each council office, I'd like to have this submitted for the record.
One of the cards, take that.
Thank you. Council President Padilla, members of the council, contrary to the testimony that you just heard, Sprint has demonstrated its need for this site. The record shows that there are coverage gaps on the Ventura Boulevard corridor. In addition, we have serious capacity problems resulting in an inordinate amount of dropped and blocked calls. Sprint examined 19 alternative sites, and chose this site only because it is the only site that meets all of the RF engineering requirements, and constitutes a building where a landlord is willing to lease space to Sprint. At the Area Planning Commission hearing, there was a lack of substantial evidence in the records to support the findings that were adopted, denying the specific plan exception. The transcript of the South Valley Area Planning Commission hearing reveals that the denial was based on RF emission considerations, which is a violation of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996. The record also demonstrates that Sprint has been unreasonably discriminated against. The Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 provides that state and local governments may not unreasonably discriminate among competing carriers that provide functionally equivalent services. In 1999, the city...
I'd ask you to conclude, please.
I will. In 1999, the city approved a conditional use permit in a specific plan exception for an identical facility for Pac Bell. for an identical facility for Pac Bell, now singular wireless. As Councilman Burnson said, we played by all the rules, and we ask you to uphold the deal.
Thank you very much. Last speaker will be Don Morey.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Don Morey. I am representing Sprint PCS. I can only say that during the entire ordeal, going through this entire process, I can... We've done a lot of projects in the city relating to telecommunications. And I have to say that Sprint, on this particular site, has been very diligent in making sure that all of the concerns of the community were addressed. There were meetings held. The site is a second site. This is a site that has been looked at because the community didn't like the first site, which was even closer to the school. And so Sprint took the time to identify another site. And as Mr. Sanders has indicated, in looking for the second site, Sprint canvassed the area in nineteen sites and was unable to find another site suitable either for engineering purposes or because landlords were unwilling to lease the property to Sprint for this particular use. So what we were left with was this site as the only site available for this use. I would say that Sprint has done a yeoman's job in trying to address the concerns of this community. And I would just ask that you give consideration to Sprint's application and approve the appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There are no other speakers to be heard on this matter. That will close the public hearing. Members of the council, it is your time to be heard. I now recognize Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I heard the very solid presentation from the Sprint representatives. But I do think in order to more fully and completely develop the record, I noticed in the audience Ms. Sheila Berman, who was a member of the Area Planning Commission. I'd ask Ms. Berman if you could come to the microphone and just answer for me the question of, what precisely were the reasons for your commission's decision to deny this request?
Well, it was based on... We made the findings, and it was based on the specific plan, that this was a building that was overheight. And there was another case that we had heard several months prior to that, where also it was a building overheight. And we denied the permit because we felt that it was an insult, you know, insult upon injury when you have a building that's overheight to begin with, to put something else on top of that that is a detriment to the community in a sense. I mean, not a detriment necessarily in every place it is, but in this case, when we looked at the coverage, we also looked at the coverage maps. And to us, it didn't seem that there was... That that location was the optimal location for it.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, members of the council, I'd like to put forth a motion which I'd like to request we can continue this item to the extent until we have an elected official sitting representing the community and district. We've gone through eight months of turmoil on this process. The applicant has asked for continuance as well. And it would be, I feel appropriate, if we can wait a little bit more, let's get an elected official in that seat and let them do their job. And let's support and deal with issues as much as we would like for them to support us if we were in the same situation. So I'd like to push that we can close the public hearing and continue this matter when we do have elected officials represented for both the community and its roots of this area.
There's the motion and the second. Mr. Holden.
Oh, that's just like killing it. You can't continue. It lasted until October 17th.
The applicant may ask for continuance.
The applicant may ask for a continuance.
That would be the Sprint people.
All right, I just... Ms. Berman was the lady's name, Commissioner? Would you just come to the mic, please? Do you live in the area?
Do I live in that specific area? I live in the valley.
Yeah, right. Do you have a cellphone?
Yes.
You know how it works?
Yes, I do.
That means there's got to be antennas someplace for you to communicate.
Absolutely, I understand that.
Makes sense, doesn't it? Well, I think what we are going to be doing is proposing to remove all antennas. How would you like that?
Well, Mr. Holden, in this case, it...
Just a minute now. We've got to remove all antennas. We had one in Monrody District where the school was there. There was a big debate, big discussion about whether we should have it. And there was overriding evidence of why we shouldn't have had it. And so, notwithstanding what Marvin said and what happened there, we voted for it. Now they make good neighbors with the school. Like they gave money to the school. Support the programs with the school. I'm looking here. This rendering, you have antennas already higher than the one you proposed on that building. So what are you talking about? You exceeded the height limit. You already exceeded the height limit. Why'd you approve that?
You're right, it is exceeding the height limit.
You already approved it.
No, we didn't. It was approved before the specific plan.
For the previous one. It's right in the building already. So what I'm really saying is that, you know, they've come here and said, "I want to build a school." Boys, I want to build a school. The toughest job at school, what has happened right now, is getting somebody to have a school in their backyard. Or a hospital. Or a park. Or anything else that's good for the community. Now, I understand that it's good to have to make use of it in someone else's backyard. That's fine. And we see that a lot. A puppy, affordable housing. You haven't seen anything yet. Talking to a new congressman with that. Because when you start proposing programs that you think are good for the community, this is what you're going to have to deal with. I want it, but I want it someplace else. And that's what's going to happen.
Well, Mr. Holden, can I correct you on one thing? We looked at our commission, we looked at the coverage, and to us, it seemed that that coverage was satisfied. That was satisfactory.
Well, that's a different argument then.
Well, that's the argument.
The argument is that they didn't need it. So you technically competent to say that they could operate with less microwave antenna coverage than they never requested. They didn't need it anymore. So they want to put in more. All right, well, then they have to answer that question later on. But I would say to you that I'm limited, so I can say what I want to say. I'm sick and tired of people saying, "I don't want a school here." "I don't want a hospital there." "I don't want a park there." "But I want to make use of it." But you've got to put it in somebody's backyard. "I don't want affordable housing here." That's all you get. That's all you get. But you know what? These are tough decisions that we have to make. And they're not against you or anyone else in the community that are for you. Sometimes you may not understand at the time. But once they put it in place, you can make use of those facilities. Make use of those conveniences. That's why I'm going to throw myself on a weight. Talk to you later.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. We have three members now waiting to speak on this item. We have a request to continue this item. Mr. Zain. Mr. Zain.
In lieu of the... Mr. President, the other council members discussing if we can have a majority for continuation, I would waive my time for that.
I mean, I agree. I just wanted to say that, you know, I was one of those who helped create area planning commissions on the city charter. So, you know, Mr. Holden, the fact of the matter is, many communities are stuck with bad planning and bad zoning decisions before area planning commissions go into operation. And now neighborhoods across the city are being able... Have a process by which they now have an opportunity to take back their communities and change the design from here forward. So I would not blame an area planning commission for now deciding not to include something when they've already been stuck with something they didn't want in the first place. So I would just want to applaud the area planning commission. And I want to applaud the neighbors who really are taking the process and really being involved in it. And I was ready to vote on it. I was going to vote no on it today. But I believe... But I did feel uncomfortable that you do not have an elected representative being here. And many times, we do make decisions for the whole city, but I think you would be better off having your elected representative here really taking this issue and standing up for you on this. But I just want to applaud you for being a part of this process. I'm going to have a tough time, as a council member, really overturning an area planning commission decision because you live there, you deal with the neighborhood, and it's your job to really stand up for the neighbors. So anyway, I just want to thank you all for being there.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Pacheco.
I'm going to vote for the continuance. Simply during that time period, one or two weeks.
If... No, the request to continue until that seat is filled, we're looking at a six-month continuance.
Okay, and the applicants agree to that?
I don't know if they have or not. They've put in a request for a continuance, but I don't believe it was that long. Perhaps we should ask them.
My point is, during this time of continuance, I would like the legal questions answered about, for example, if the city can independently prove that the phone connection is at 90% rate, do we have the jurisdiction to deny a permit? Because I understand your federal law, our jurisdiction is very limited in terms of the location of these items. So that's the only question I really want. The second thing is, if the question is... The answer is unclear under the law, would this be our first case of litigation involving this issue, which may set the record for us? So those are the questions I want answered during the continuance. I mean, I don't need them answered right now, but during the continuance, I'd like to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Holden.
I know it's going to sound really good and make each of you feel good when you say, "I'm going to do what the community wants done." And that's good, because the community, they don't want anything done. And you mean you're going to stop in your tracks. You can't blame the previous council persons or the committees for not doing due diligence in terms of establishing zoning variances. There are conditions for them. There's reason why you have exemptions. Because the program, the projects, building the city, improving the economic basis of the city, providing for jobs. There's so many things that you have to deal with as elected officials. And I tell you right now, you have the mindset. This is, once the idea, recommendation comes from a community, and yet we respect that. You were elected. You make the final decision. The decision is to do nothing. Then you'll be known as a... Henceforth as a do-nothing council. And you're going to be written up as a do-nothing council. Right now, LA Times article was that this council is not accomplishing very much, not doing very much. And it's going to do much less. So you go from doing nothing to doing less. And that's what's going to happen. I think that for sure. But that's what you want. That's what you're going to get. And I'll vote with you to do nothing for you and your districts. But we're going to do something for as long as I'm here in the 10th district and make it grow economically, provide the services that the people need. But they can make telephone calls. Except if you drive to my area, you can make a phone call. You don't live in my area. I hope you can. Because that's the way you want it.
Mr. Garcetti. Previous question has been called. Madam clerk, please open the roll. The previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, discussion presented. We have a motion to continue before us with the need to be type specific. Believe the appropriate continuance is six months. That'll take us to April 19th after the vacancy has been filled for the council district number two. Madam clerk, please open the roll on the motion to continue. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Item number 16, called special by councilmember Zain. And there is also a technical amendment on the motion to correct recommendation number two to $12,542.
Okay, so that's a verbal technical amendment. So you added before a call. Mr. Zain, let me remind you, we're trying to get through a race of agenda items first before getting to the closed session items, which will include the security issue. We spent about 30 minutes on that last item. Mr. Zain.
Mr. President, colleagues, do we have staff here on this matter? My district has a particular problem with this. And I understand that the information that we've been provided doesn't answer all my questions. And briefly, if you can tell me the success in CD 10 and if there's any other districts that have this program in place.
John Chavez with the Community Development Department. We currently have the day laborer program established in six sites. There's a new location in CD 10 that we're trying to develop. It would be at the Home Depot and Costco development. So we do have six and a possible seventh to be established this year.
What district? What council district?
We have them in councilmember Perry's office, Garcetti's office, councilmember Padilla, councilmember Hahn, councilmember Reyes's district.
Do you have any in the third district, the West Hampton Valley?
No, we don't.
We have a tremendous problem out there that's been growing and expanding. And the concern I have, is it more than just an outreach program? Is it a hands-on? And is it effective?
We have used this agency in the past to do this. They have submitted to us their strategy and have talked about the going out to Woodland Hills and trying to remedy a day laborer situation out in Woodland Hills. They involve the police department. They involve the residents. It's a way of addressing day laborer issues without actually developing and actually having a fixed site right there in a particular council district. The... We are also exploring with the Home Depots and the Coscos that are building developments to have them provide some money to do these kinds of... To have day laborer programs on-site, particularly in Home Depot centers.
I know a Home Depot's scheduled to go in Fallbrook. And just a correction on page three. It has Woodland Hills in CD 4, it's CD 3. And also in Fallbrook, that's also CD 3, not CD 4. You can make those corrections. But my concern before supporting this is that maybe someone can add input that they do are effective. I know the raids that have taken place in the past are ineffective, and I'm not advocating that. But I want to do is see it cleaned up from the community where it's harming the businesses and the constituents are continually calling. And in the West Hampton Valley, And in the West Hampton Valley, this program, this problem is continuing, and it's getting worse as time goes on. With the unemployment, it may even get worse and it impacts significantly the neighborhood. And if I can hear from any of my colleagues who've seen it and say it works and it's effective, I'd be more than happy to support it because we need some relief from it.
Mr. Reyes.
Councilmember Zion. Councilmembers, this program is very effective if and when you have a management entity tagged along with the site itself. We actually have folks who are monitoring, making sure that area is clean, making sure that the blocks around there where they tend to congregate, they do come to the site. And we've been very fortunate to have Shirley, which is a support service program. They also provide skills in learning English, getting citizenry, doing the things they need to do to become more active participant in society. So it is a positive for that area. It can serve as a sponge to bring in those other individuals that are out in those corners. But at the beginning, it's a very proactive, very strong role the council plays, quite frankly, in making sure the quality is there.
Councilmember Zion, we do, in some of the council districts and councilmembers, Shakowsky's district, they have bi-monthly, sometimes quarterly meetings. And we get all the stakeholders, the residents, LAPD, businesses. And if there are issues, they're brought to the table right then and there. And the contractors are responsible for going out there and fixing the problem. So that's one way of assuring that the needs of the districts are being met.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
President, I think that if you look at the day laborer sites that we have in Los Angeles, the ones where we have had some sort of fee, however nominally, like in Van Nuys, I think they've been much less successful. I think what we have in Cypress Park is one of the more successful ones. And remember that Home Depot is coming to us for all kinds of projects in the next, you know, in the coming months. And I think that when Home Depot comes in and adds the pressure, for instance, for day laborers to congregate, that we really ask them and we're working with them, and they've been quite responsive. In Hollywood, to actually build a day laborer site right there on the site physically that's free as well, because I think even if you charge a dollar, people will still be congregating. The captain of the Hollywood division and I sat down with Home Depot because it's really in the police department's interest as well to have those onsite so that they can know that people who are not congregating there for work, but for other reasons, they can actually focus on them. So I think that's a good way to go forward and to ask Home Depot and similar companies to bring some corporate responsibility, because they benefit from those workers being there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And Mr. Zion and the person who knows having our venue in my district as well, a visit to some of the sites may be helpful. I encourage all members. Any of the members wishing to speak? Seeing none, Madam clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number twenty-seven, Mr. President. I understand there's a request to continue that for thirty days to November sixteenth.
Members request to continue item twenty-seven without objection.
Item number thirty-one is the next item that was, that has a card, and I believe councilmember Perry has a motion on that item, too.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. In the interest of time, because of the special needs for today's council meeting, I would like to request that we take item thirty-one and immediately refer it to Economic Development Committee. I've spoken with Mr. Garcetti about this, and he is in agreement. And it's my intention to get this item on the next meeting, which I believe is in approximately two weeks.
Okay, we do have three cards committed on this item. We can choose to, if you want, hear from the members of the public or without hearing from the members for this, has to committee. Mr. Pacheco.
I would like to hear from the speakers, and I also have some comments. And I also wanted to make sure that I got referred to budget and finance, since we're talking about tourism and the trans occupancy tax, which has an impact on the budget.
Okay, public hearing has not been held on this item unless there's strong objection. There's only three cards.
Well, if that's the case, maybe we should just let them make their report.
In the interest of time, however, I will ask for their brevity. The council calls forward Ms. Marielena Durazo, to be followed by Clemente Callaway and Madeline Janas Aparicio.
The events of September eleventh have created a real crisis for the nation, the economy, but especially for those in the hospitality industry. And of course, that's even reached Los Angeles. Our union represents the majority of hospitality and tourism workers in North America. To date, more than one-third of our membership is not working. Many, many more are on reduced work weeks. And this is the same, the same figures have been reported in the non-union hospitality sector. So right now, that means three thousand workers in our industry, union industry, in hotels, airport concessions, and airline catering are not working. And they are the most vulnerable. They are welfare-to-work participants, they are single parents, they are new Americans, migrants from many parts of the world, and their services help to create thousands of jobs for other Angelinos. They are facing a crisis. Suddenly, they have no health insurance. And they don't, I don't think that the public healthcare system can absorb all of them. They represent, suddenly, they have no income. And what's worse in the non-union sector is that they're being let go, they have no rights of recall. Employers are using the crisis to get rid of union leaders based on, and also based on age and higher wages and taking complete advantage. So we're over here to let you know that, but also to ask for your support. One, we'd like for the city council to support efforts in Congress for federal payment of Cobra healthcare continuation, to increase and extend federal unemployment insurance and temporary tax relief for hospitality employers to get these workers back to work. We'd like, second, to support in the California legislature for new and immediate funding for a marketing plan to encourage travel within California. And by the way, we think that the Los Angeles Convention Hotel is also critical to this future. We want, we'd like the city council to provide financial support for new hospitality relief centers to assist workers with food, emergency rent, utility subsidies, and others. And finally, to help with what is going on at the airport, restructuring concessions to recuperate the loss of jobs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Callaway, to be followed by Ms. Janas Aparicio.
Good morning, President and councilmembers. My name is Clemente Callaway. I'm a concierge for the Hyatt Leagues Downtown Los Angeles, and I'm a face of the unemployed. In the hospitality industry, my job is to entertain and to provide quality services to all that come to the hotel. Throughout the years, I have entertained heads of state, bank executives, entertainers themselves. I'm a single parent, and due to the September eleventh tragedy, I have not worked in the last month. My son is about to graduate from high school, and it was, it was my dream to be able to provide for him for the senior year. It will not be a good memory if I'm not unable to, if I'm unable to provide for him in his senior year, for the prom, for his pictures, for the things and necessities that he needs in his senior year. It will not be a good memory if I can't pay the rent or buy food and keep the electricity on. I will be also a face of the unemployed and the homeless. It would not be a good memory if my son gets sick and I can't pay for care, healthcare in the future. I have applied for unemployment. However, unemployment drastically pays only at two hundred and thirty-two dollars a week. That is not enough to take care of me and my family. I will not be able to make it on that. My story will be duplicated by the housekeepers, the dishwashers, and that's also the face of frustration and anxiety. We're not asking for handouts. We're, we're workers, we're union workers, and we're proud working Americans. We're not asking, we're asking for your support while we find ways to get new jobs and so that we can continue to contribute to our economy. Dear councilmembers, I invite each of you to join us in the relief center this Friday at our union to see how we're, we're working to get ourselves back into action. We invite you to come out and see us and help us during our crises. Together, we can do it. Deseable.
Thank you very much. Ms. Madeline Janas Aparicio.
Madeline Janas Aparicio, Director of the L.A. Alliance for New Economy. Three very brief points. First of all, I think it's very important for us to remember in these times that in the time of crisis, it's most often the lowest-income communities that are the hardest hit. And that is truly the case right now. And so to reemphasize that everything that we do and everything that the city does needs to take this into account. Second is, we are working very closely with the Mayor's Economic Assessment Task Force and number of community and service organizations and unions to put together a comprehensive, a proposal for a comprehensive displaced worker assistance program. We, I just heard this morning that the Carnahan bill in Congress, which was the bill that would have given support to displaced workers, is now dead. And so it does not look that there, it looks like there's any immediate assistance to displaced workers coming from the federal government. So we believe that the city needs to take every step possible, as urgently as possible, to support these displaced workers. And there's a few things we can suggest now. First of all, there are these emergency relief centers that Marielena was talking about for hospitality and airport workers. Right now, it's all spit and glue. Everything that's being done right now is with financial, with private donations. We need the city to come in and support that as much as possible. We'd love you to consider things like slowing down evictions or moratoriums on evictions, stopping utility shut-offs. These are things that are within the city's control and that could be done immediately. Also, looking at support for displaced worker rehire program. Finally, the last point is, we need to move full steam ahead with all the economic development programs that were already in the works, the major development projects, especially those that are highlighting community benefits and managing community benefits. And then finally, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, given all the evictions that are happening right now, we need affordable housing more than ever.
Thank you very much. This concludes the comment period for this item. Before returning to members' comments and questions, I want to remind us that the motion before us requests status support. We can have an extensive status report now, or we can approve the motion requesting the report and have that report be made to at least one council committee. Mr. Pacheco, it's still your time.
Mr. President, I will defer to the maker of the motion under council rules if she wishes to speak first, and I'll, I'll speak after.
Ms. Perry.
You okay?
Go ahead.
All right, okay. Mr. President and colleagues, I was just simply going to reiterate what our speakers have said. Now is not the time to be timid about the redevelopment, about downtown, the redevelopment of our old city and really being a part of the rebound of the economy. Right now, the city is looking for us to provide leadership in terms of bringing back the economy. We have to look at all our projects, move them. We have to do all of our construction, all of our developments. And specifically, I want to reinforce at least my commitment to the idea of bringing a state-of-the-art premier convention hotel to downtown that will make us competitive in a couple of years, when all these conventions are looking to re-host or have premier conventions, considering all the ones that were canceled during this crisis. So I think we have to look at this in the long term, that the convention hotel is a key part of bringing back the local economy and really showing that nearship in the city of Los Angeles, that we are going to survive this crisis and be a part of turning everything around. So I just wanted to publicly restate my commitment to not only downtown and the redevelopment of all the city, but specifically to our speakers and the issue of the hotel and the redevelopment of that whole entertainment area.
Okay, back to Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate your support on this. And in the interest of balance and fairness, since they are here and they are prepared today, I suppose we should have Mr. Collins and George Kirkland, and if you prefer, whoever, from the Visitors and Convention Bureau to come and speak to us very briefly about what we have put forward today. Not only is a convention center hotel of importance, and as a council member for the district, I intend to be an advocate for that, but what is also critical is what Mr. Collins and Kirkland have to say to us today about retooling our marketing strategy in light of a difficult economy and in light of the events of September the eleventh, and that there are many options that we have here. We may just have to have a different vision now. So if you would proceed and make your presentation.
Thank you very much. I'm George Kirkland, President of the Los Angeles Convention and Visitors Bureau, and this is Mike Collins, our Executive Vice President. And I very much appreciate this opportunity to spend just a few minutes with you, and I recognize that time is your most precious commodity this morning. So I'm going to try to cut to the chase and do this as succinctly as I possibly can. I think one of the important considerations as they relate to the travel and tourism industry, that prior to the events on September the eleventh, the industry was already in serious decline, starting in April last year, with those declines being driven substantially by economic dislocation of a lot of corporate businesses throughout the United States in a significant downturn, an unprecedented downturn in the business travel markets. I will tell you that hotel occupancy had dropped four and a half percent between April and August. Average room rates had also dropped perilously, only to have the events of September the eleventh drive a stake in the heart of the travel and tourism industry, not only here in Los Angeles, but nationwide. The industry has never, ever come close to the level of dislocation that we are seeing here today. And as you heard from Marielena Durazo, you have never seen as much dislocation in the employment mix of our industry as ever before. We have retained PKF Consulting to do a market assessment in terms of the downturn and to use their crystal ball in terms of speaking with the hotel industry and assessing exactly how long-lasting and how deep this difficulty is going to be. They have come back and told us that between October first and June of next year, that the industry will in all likely lose two billion dollars in sales directly related to travel and tourism. Most importantly, the dislocation in jobs, because so many of the employment base is driven by hourly workers in our industry, the dislocation in jobs is going to approach forty-one thousand jobs. It has never, ever happened in the history of Los Angeles or in this country to see that level of dislocation related to travel and tourism. We have, as a result of that, tried to take a look at the various market segments and ourselves get a better handle on where we think the industry is going to go. We hope that that, those numbers that have been put forth by PKF are a worst-case scenario. As it relates to the business travel market, which is certainly a very important segment of our marketplace, the Business Travel Coalition, which represents all of the large buyers of travel in the United States, have forecasted that the downturn in business travel will be fifty percent in January of this coming year compared to January of the preceding year. We think that number may be off, but even if it's off by ten or fifteen percent, it still represents profound impact on travel and tourism, and business travel represents a significant market segment of our business. The international markets have fallen off the map in events such as the dislocation that we are seeing today, the state of war essentially that exists between ourselves and certainly Afghanistan. All, all international travel, not only travel to the United States, but all international travel worldwide, has come to a screeching halt. If you take a look at what the forecast has been, the U.S. Department of Commerce has forecasted that very, virtually every single country in the, in the world will have a drop in travel to the United States between now and the end of June. Some of those drops are so profound that they are expecting that it'll take as much as three years to recover the levels we enjoyed last year. The only markets that we think there's any hope in, I will tell you, is Mexico. We do think that there's an opportunity for that market to recover within a year's period of time, and perhaps the United Kingdom. The Japanese market is going to be off at least thirty percent. You may have read in the paper today, or you're going to read in the paper tomorrow. Air New Zealand is, is terminating a significant level of its service to Australia, New Zealand. Delta has already terminated its non-stop service from Los Angeles to Nagoya and also to Narita. And we think this is only the beginning of what you're going to see as the increased downturn in airline lift into our destinations for some of our key overseas markets. As it relates, as it relates to the meetings and convention market, the good news is we are having the best year ever in terms of the number of conventions that are meeting at the Los Angeles Convention Center. That's the good news. The bad news is that the attrition rate that has happened since the event of, on September eleventh, is something truly to be concerned about, because that travel, too, is business travel-driven. People are making discretionary decisions. Instead of sending four people, they're going to send two. Instead of spending eight exhibitors, they're going to send one or two. So you're going to see profound impacts on the cash flow stream at the convention center in the coming year as it relates to the downturn we are seeing. Microsoft was originally going to have two-point-five million dollars in food and beverage sales at the convention center next week. It is now scheduled to be about one-point-six million. And I think that's, that is simply one of many conventions that we have coming down the pike, that you're going to see significant attrition in, in terms of attendance and spending onsite. The one market that we think we can have some success with is the leisure travel market. The good news is California is rich and having a large population base, and at the same time, our number-one market is San Francisco's. San Francisco's number-one market is L.A., where San Diego's number-one market. We have encouraged the state legislature and the governor. We have met with the governor on two occasions. We've met with his staff. We've had good support from Herb Wesson and others, who are endeavoring to try to find fifteen million dollars for a statewide advertising program to encourage Californians to travel within California, to help rebuild and sustain our own employment base and our own economy. That is presently working its way through the legislative process. They have identified the money and working through now, trying to figure out how to best access that money. Without the state putting in a level of money of fifteen million dollars, we're not going to be competitive with communities like Las Vegas, which is today spending thirteen million dollars in San Francisco and Los Angeles to take travel into those areas.
I appreciate all this information. This is wonderful. This is very helpful. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask that the balance of your presentation be held for when this item is heard in committee. You do have a motion on the floor, so we refer this matter to committee. Mr. Garcetti, did you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I just want to thank Ms. Perry for your leadership on this and bringing this to committee. I think we I think we will try to attempt to maybe even do this as a joint committee meeting between economic development, employment, and housing and community development because of some of the issues that cross over and overlap there. I'd like to thank also Representatives Marielena, Madeline Janas Aparicio as well for coming by. I think a lot of us are waiting for tragedy, are waiting for something out there, but we have to recognize that in our city, that has already hit some people. And for all of us, while I applaud the, the Mayor's Task Force, that's really only a beginning. That's four meetings among people who are, have other jobs and are just doing this part-time. We really need to look, as a council, at convening members from different departments to be working on this full-time in a coordinated fashion. That leadership is the test of whether or not we can respond to this crisis. Truly, that is the greatest test of this council, and I would like all of my colleagues to join us in, in that effort. I think we need to especially encourage travel as well from Central America. For all of those people who are watching right now on television, it's very important that you travel in California as well, that we get people visiting relatives and call your relatives from other places and invite them to come now. That is critical for us because that international component has dropped off. I also want to praise the work of the Community Development Department and the job fairs that they've had that are ongoing and some of their response teams. I think that can be better coordinated with our unions and some of the folks that are most hard-hit from the service industries as well. And I appreciate your words on, on the Housing Trust Fund as well, Ms. Aparicio. I think that's going to be very important in the next two weeks for us not to withdraw from our commitment to doing that as budgets tighten up. It's going to be critical, even more critical, in these times that we fully fund that and lay out that plan. So, thank you for your leadership, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And without objection, we do have a request to refer this matter to two committees, economic development and employment, as well as budget finance. We'd encourage the chairs of those committees, if possible, to conduct a joint committee hearing. Without objection, this matter is therefore referred. Thanks, Tom, please.
This is time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
Let's actually hold that until after closed session.
Do you wish to go into the special meeting, Mr. President?
Let's go into the special meeting and call the first agenda item, or item number one on the special meeting agenda, and consider that jointly with our regular agenda, closed agenda items. Call the roll, please.
Bernsen, Galanter, Garcetti, Han, Holden, Iskavsky, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Kadia, ten members present, Mr. President.
Okay, we're now in the special agenda meeting, and we have one item agenda, I believe. Madam Clerk.
That item's a closed-session item, and it's a briefing by the Civic Center Security Task Force.
So as I mentioned, we will go into closed session to consider this item as well as regular scheduled closed-session items. Before we do, however, we have a special guest with us, former city councilwoman and current controller of the city of Los Angeles, Ms. Loretta.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm, I'm really not the special guest. Our special guests are the young boys and girls that I'm pointing at from Langrisham Elementary School, but I have the wonderful honor of introducing them, because one of their teachers happens to be my older daughter, Catherine Mulder, fifth-grade teacher, and she's here with Mr. Pettix, and also some wonderful parent volunteers. And they have been, I'm not sure you all noticed, and that's a good sign, they've been in here for about 30 minutes, very much interested in listening to the discussion about the airport workers, and I think have been very, very well behaved. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. And thank all the kids for coming today. One of the lessons can be what does closed session mean? Conformant of California code, the council now adjourned into closed session with consideration of items. May I ask Madam Clerk to please clear the chambers?
Mr. President, it might be worth, as we move from one session to the next, to be reminded, as it connects to the earlier discussion, that the recent job fair held by the Personnel Department was hugely successful, with over 3,000 persons showing up for the jobs that were available, which accents the gravity of the challenge that we are, are contending with. But I think the Personnel Department and the Airport Department and the range of entities involved are to be commended for the work that they did do. And that's the first of a series of job fairs to take place in our city.
Mr. President, the balance of the closed-session items, inasmuch as council has lost a quorum, will be held on the desk for Friday.
Okay. To repeat, all matters that we were not able to get to today are being continued until Friday. We are now short of a quorum. May we still take public comment for today's meeting? Let's go ahead and do that. This is the public comment period, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward first Mr. Michael Heron St. Hill, to be followed by Mr. Mark Thomas, or, excuse me, Sheila Ward.
Good morning, Michael H. St. Hill. I need this body here to look at L.A. Police Department and realize the corruption that is going on in there, to realize that the drug dealers that are running on the street and selling drugs actually reports to the police officer today, and that in order to stop this, city council should direct L.A. Police Department to do a random drug testing of all the police officers every week. You cover all the police officers, that way you make sure you don't have a bunch of drug dealing officers, because they are corrupt. Also, to do an investigation on the, on the SRO Corporation, whereas you have the employees of SRO and the tenants of SRO dealing drugs and making L.A. a, a worse place. And for all those people who thinks that, I am on drugs, I offer a, a, you can take a sample of my hair, or any responsible person can take a sample of my hair anytime you want, I will give you the permission to, and it will give you a, a idea whether I ever in my life used drugs. People say in college they use drugs, short space of time. When I was in high school, when I was in college, I never, ever, ever, I never snort or smoke. I never, ever, in my entire life, dealt with drugs or used drugs. So for all my enemies who spread the word, I hate to disappoint them. I've never, I'm, I'm one Negro person, I'm proud to say I've never, in my entirety of my life, used drugs or dealt with drugs. And so there, that goes for my enemies, and I thank you very much, and I, I actually pleased to direct L.A. Police Department to do a random drug test of all the officers in, in L.A. every week, until you cover every officer and repeat it every thereafter, to make sure you don't have these drug dealers in the police department, because they are corrupt. And I'm telling you definite fact. And also to, sorry to repeat myself, also to do an investigation on SRO Corporation and the drug activity that is going on very heavily there, and all the bums that are on the street downtown that are, are receiving the drugs from the employees and the tenants of SRO. I appreciate it 100%, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sheila Ward, are you still here? I'm, Ms. Ward might have had to leave. This concludes the public comment period for today's meeting. Adjourning motions? Please stand. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I request that we adjourn our meeting today in memory of Trista Lee Harrison, who passed away this past Saturday. She was only 17 years old, and this is particularly sad for me personally, because she actually spent much of her life until just recently in the community of San Pedro. She was a classmate of my son, Mark, at Taper Elementary School, at Dotson Middle School, and then she went on to San Pedro High School, and she lived with her grandmother, who was a neighbor of mine. In fact, she would come out many times while my, my older son, Danny, was working on his car, and she and one of her girlfriends thought he was really cute, and they spent a lot of time talking to Danny. She is survived by a large, loving family, including her mother, Alicia, her stepfather, Tracy, her father, Jeffrey, brothers Aaron and Christopher, nephew Cameron, stepbrothers Joshua and Nicholas, stepsister Marie, and her grandparents, Mary and Constantine, Constantine O'Neill, and my neighbor, Virginia Harrison. It's a particularly sad thing for my family, and her life was cut tragically short, and she was a bright young woman, and I appreciate the fact that you're joining me in adjourning our council memory, our council meeting in her memory.
Thank you. Any others? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.